Nobody to let in.
Okay.
All right, so I'm gonna just call it, right?
Yeah.
Okay. It's seven o'clock, we're gonna be calling to order the planning and zoning meeting for May 25th, 2022. So we start with, we would normally introduce everyone from Zoom, however, there are no people lines and
There's nobody.
No one's there. So I'm not gonna bother to read the instructions or any of that information regarding Zoom. So in attendance tonight will be Diane Carroll, Dan Agreco, myself, Rick Peresino will be the three voting members of the commission, and with us will be Jeremy Wafer, who is our planning officer. So minutes for approval, we'll go into the 5:11 minutes, if I can have a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion, Diane.
Second, who wants to second it?
Second.
Okay. And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nobody, obviously, it's just three. So that's it. So now we can go to the public hearing, first agenda meeting is item four, public hearings scheduled for seven o'clock Wednesday, May 11, 2022, City Hall Auditorium, Room 218, 140 Main Street, Torrenton, Connecticut. Special exception 22-03 and site plan 1408. The applicant is LCP Realty LLC. Location is 37 Felicity Lane, and the proposal is change of use to primary parking lot, formal residential use. Public hearing continued from the May 11, 2022 hearing. I don't know that we need to really read the announcement again, so we're just continuing. So let's go ahead, and if you could introduce yourself, name and address.
Good evening, for the record, my name is Kenneth Rika, professional engineer and licensed land surveyor, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Litchfield County Pediatrics for 37 Felicity Lane, Torrenton, Connecticut. Jeremy, if you could blow the site plan up a little bit, that would be helpful. I do have a copy of the site plan in front of me, it's actually the landscaping plan at 10 scale, so that you could see just in color particularly what we're talking about. I'll pick that up later.
Getting there.
It's just a really slow computer.
Okay. Okay, Ken, go ahead.
Okay, what you're seeing on the screen is a copy of the landscaping plan, but it does have all the particulars of the site on it. I'll give you your quick background, the property is a one-third of an acre lot, Felicity Lane. It was formerly a dentist office that was run out of what was formerly a house before that, and there was a driveway and a small parking area behind the house. Recently, Litchfield County Pediatrics purchased the property to use as parking for employees only. They do own, or their main business is across the street at 20 Felicity Lane, so all of the clients will be parking in a parking lot there. However, because of COVID and the way things have been going lately with appointments, they've really had an overrun of the number of cars in the parking lot, and so the employees have been parking mostly on Felicity Lane to make sure that their clients have parking spaces. And so this parking lot, we're offering 10 parking spaces for the employees to get their cars off of Felicity Lane and leave the parking at 20 Felicity Lane at the main office for clients. The, there's an existing, the house has been demolished and there's a new retaining wall and an existing paved surface out there now that was actually constructed without a zoning permit. We're, I'm here tonight to clear that up and get approval for the parking area, and we've had to address city comments and show conformance with the zoning regulations. So there have been some minor changes that are coming about on the plan. Fortunately, they were minor enough that it doesn't require dismantling and rebuilding of the retaining wall, and we are able to use the same paved surface that's there now with a little bit of addition to meet the requirements for parking in aisles and drainage as well. The existing constructed parking lot really is just a parking area with a retaining wall. There was currently, or is currently in place, a gravel parking area along the frontage on Felicity Lane, and that parking area that was constructed is in the front yard setback, which is prohibited by the zoning regulations. So the new plan we are showing eliminates the parking and turns it into a landscaped area along the frontage, and you can see by the plan next to me that we're showing plantings of trees and shrubs in that area and a lawn to supplement that. And currently, there's a row of boulders that was planned to keep cars in that parking lot, parking area, from driving over the top of the retaining wall. But those boulders will be moved forward to prohibit cars from parking on the lawn in that area, and they've been placed far enough off the roadway so that the city can still plow snow and have no problem with stockpiling snow off of the paved edge of the road. There's also an existing encroachment that came with the property. I suppose the last time it was paved, when it was a dentist office, there was a small encroachment right at the intersection of Felicity Lane where the driveway apron actually extends approximately five feet over the property line onto Dr. Abbott's property. And the plan is to purchase that sliver of property from Dr. Abbott so that that pavement can remain, and if that's the case, then the drive accessway is in full conformance with the city's with requirements for accessways and driveways. And Attorney Ebersol has just shown up with a copy of a quick claim deed for that very transfer, and I have it in my hand. I'm assuming this is an original?
Yes, for the other side.
So we'll be able to get you a copy, but I'm not gonna hand this over to the commission at this point. So the boundary line adjustment is in place, and that makes us conforming again to the city's regulations. What we do have to do to fortify is we have to add a little bit of pavement at the backside of the parking lot on the east for cars to be able to back out of the parking spot adjacent to the retaining wall and still be able to turn and maneuver and get out of the lot. So we've added a small paved pull-off and extended the parking by about five feet so that cars aren't driving into the, into the lawned area. And it shows pretty clearly on that map, it's a very dark shaded area that is on the northeast side of the existing parking lot. The, there's parking along the rear as well that is currently there. That does not, that area also does not meet the entire length of the required 18-foot parking spaces, and so I worked with the city engineer, Paul Hudson's, and we've agreed that the difference ranges between three or four inches and a foot and a half, and it would be an area where the noses of cars and the backs of cars would be just parked up in that area. So Paul and I agreed that we would go ahead and just do a gravelled surface there and extend the parking that way rather than trying to add a very small three-inch to foot and a half strip of pavement there. And then that works out actually pretty well because what we've planned entirely along the back is a, is a stormwater infiltration trench, which is a four by three and a half foot, four foot wide by three and a half foot deep trench that will be dug into the ground and lined with filter fabric and filled with riprap stone. The riprap stone will have a lot of voids in between it, so we'll be able to accept a lot of the groundwater that's flowing, or a lot of the stormwater that's flowing off of the driveway to the back of the parking area, we'll be able to intercept that, and we will infiltrate as much as possible. And we've also designed a stone overflow, which is eight foot by eight foot, in an area off of the back of the driveway to relieve pressure on that infiltration trench if it were to fill up. That stone is a much bigger stone than the modified riprap. Modified riprap is generally about five-inch diameter stone. The stone we're gonna be using on the outlet trench is what's called standard riprap, and the average diameter of those stones is a foot and a quarter, so it's actually a very large, heavy stone. The stones can be up to three feet there. The reason for that is that there's a very steep embankment right off of, right behind us that leads down to the Still River. And you can see it on the, on the plan on the screen by the closeness of the contours. That slope from the backside down to the brook, at least on this particular property, is 1.7 to 1, so it doesn't even meet the two-to-one grading requirements. It's existing, it's vegetated, we'd like to stay away from doing any work on that slope if possible, so it was kind of handy that we had this little area because it already had shown some erosion coming off of the former parking areas, and we managed to fortify that with the standard riprap, and now we're going to use that to dissipate the energy of water coming out and make sure that we do not create an erosion problem with the runoff. The, we've calculated the runoff from the site, and we utilized this stone trench and calculated the volume of water it can handle, and we've sized it so that it can handle up to the 100-year storm, which really isn't a tremendous amount of water in this case. I think what we're looking at is about 474 cubic feet of water, which is the, which is the amount of runoff coming from this site. Fortunately, the front portion in front of the retaining wall actually drains to Felicity, so that is taken out of the equation, and we're just dealing with the impervious area that we have. There has been a slight increase in impervious area of 224 square feet. Most of that came about in the recent revision with adding the pavement to make sure that we meet the city's regulations for Iowa's and parking areas. The Gulf Stream itself, out of curiosity's sake, is approximately 120 feet from the edge of the pavement, it is also 175 feet approximately from the rear property line here. If you look over the embankment, you can see that there has been some erosion down low, that erosion is not right now occurring on this site, but it appears that it may be leaching out of the embankment below us as groundwater. And there was actually a letter submitted to the commission concerned about the runoff here. We've taken a look at this, I've checked the site, there's areas here that may have, may have eroded in the past. One of them in particular is in an area where there is an existing guardrail system and what we're calling a crib retaining wall. And I wasn't really sure what that was for, and I went and I did some site investigation and took a look, and you can clearly see on the backside of there that in one section of that retaining wall, the grade drops significantly. And I do believe that was from driveway runoff, formally coming down this driveway and just rushing straight off the driveway and creating, I think it's about a three or four foot ditch on the backside of that wall, and I think the crib wall was created to stop that type of erosion, and it actually seemed to have worked pretty well because you've got vegetation growing through the crib wall at this point, you've got trees, you've got shrubs, and the vegetation below is stable and there's no sign of erosion anymore, so that worked pretty well. I don't wanna touch that either if I don't have to, it's in decent shape now. It seems to be doing the job that was intended. We're providing drainage above it to fortify that and actually keep more water away from it than currently gets there. So I think the best thing possible for us to do is just leave it in place and not disturb that embankment. We'll also leave the existing metal beam guardrail there, but we're adding a brand-new one four feet farther closer to the driveway to prevent cars from going over the edge. Somebody maybe not paying attention as they're pulling out and put it in reverse when they meant forward. There's a pretty steep drop-off within 15 feet of the parking area, so we're adding a new guardrail and lining the parking area with it to make sure that if anybody does have a mishap, they're not going over the edge. As far as lighting goes, we have submitted a lighting plan, and it's kind of interesting, this is the first one I've ever done, the lighting is going to be solar-powered. Receptor on top of the lights with a backup battery on the poles themselves, and it'll be completely solar, there will be no power being supplied to this site, so all lighting is going to come from the sun. And the solar lightings, the photometric plan that was prepared shows that lighting does not spill off of the property. And it's lit enough so that it's a decent parking area, but it's not very bright, and the lights will be automatically shut off at 10:00 PM at night, they will come on at dusk and turn it off at 10:00.
How many lumens?
How many lumens? I have to look that up, I'm not a lighting expert, but I can tell you, I think I can tell you.
Seventy-nine eighteen, according to the plan.
Seven thousand nine hundred and eighteen. That's pretty bright. That's very bright. Seems very bright.
Thank you, Jeremy.
I didn't mean to interrupt, Ken, sorry.
I think I've covered everything, so if the commission has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Any commissioners have any questions? I have a few. Okay, so the height of the retaining wall is how high?
It ranges from one block to five feet, one block's approximately two feet, so that
This is a one block at the entrance and then grows up to five feet?
Yes, and it's stacked at both ends, it's stepped at both ends to a maximum of five feet tall.
The pitch of the pavement then is primarily, almost the entire lot would be pitched to the rear.
Yes.
So the only pitching towards Felicity Lane will be probably the entrance?
The, actually, just, the entrance is also pitched inward.
It's pitched to the rear as well?
Yes, yes, it's all downhill off of Felicity Lane to get to the parking area.
So anything pitched towards Felicity Lane is the old existing parking?
Right, which is, which is going to be landscaped.
All right. The small riprap channel that you've got there that will funnel the water to the larger riprap outlet, is that gonna be leveled to the pavement, meaning it's same grade?
It's, the top of the channel will actually be arched a little bit lower so that as grass grows up, water will still be able to.
I mean, the only reason I ask that is it looks like the guardrails on the other side of the riprap, so you'd have to drive through the riprap to get to the guardrail?
Yes.
Okay.
And we really don't want that, but it worked out better to pull this channel farther away from the embankment.
Okay.
Just for stability's sake, the farther we can get away from the embankment, the better.
So the large riprap outlet is essentially just water migrating
Out of
Out of that, out of that containment area?
Infiltration trench, it has, it has to pass through the modified riprap first
Yep.
And then a filter fabric, which has a permittivity rate that's fairly high, but it's not coming out in a highly concentrated fashion. It won't be gushing out of there, it'll be, it'll be flowing.
Okay. The operation of the dentist office, is that what it is? No, it's the pediatrician, sorry. That, that's not gonna be late at night anyway, the only time the lights will probably be of any consequence for the public would be during the winter time.
Correct.
So the other option, the other thought I had was, I mean, I doubt Felicity Lane, I'm not familiar with it, I know Peck Road, I don't remember Felicity Lane, it's certainly residential, extremely residential.
Yes, it is.
It's a fairly quiet road, I'm assuming.
Well, it's a residential property to the east, it's another doctor's office to the
And the road itself is not highly traveled.
Correct.
So the only issue there is safety, obviously you got a lot on one side of the street that some people have to cross over to get to the
Correct.
The business. And for internal circulation within, I mean, there's no direction for public walkway, there's nothing that says you need to go this way, people are gonna just migrate out of the lot, however they feel like.
With this particular lot, it's reserved for staff only.
Oh, this is completely
Staff only.
Okay.
All of the clients will be parking on the main property.
Okay, so the convenience is for the client.
Correct.
Okay. That's it for me, that's all I wanted to ask. Okay, anyone else has any other questions, then? Okay, what I'll do for you, so you understand, what we do now is we'll go to speak to the public, and we'll ask people who wanna come up and speak in favor, and then after that, we'll ask the people who wanna speak in opposition, and then after that, we'll basically have some comments from the city planner. And that's how the process works. So we're at that point now where we'll open it up to anyone who wants to speak in favor, please come up and state your name and address and give us your testimony. Seeing none, then I would ask if you have anybody in the audience who would like to speak against this, then to come up and state your name and address and provide us with your testimony.
I'm Diane Frisbee. I own property to the right of this parking lot that was there, and I didn't know it was going in or anything. But I could understand, I'm supposed to have like a 25-foot buffer between my property and that property, and I don't, it's not there. So that's one of my problems with it. Also, behind the property, there has been a lot of the dirt and trees and stuff like that being pushed down the hill from all the rain, and I have pictures, if you wanna see the pictures.
You can certainly submit them if you'd like, and we'll put them on record, on file.
Okay, just so you know, those are the railings. And that was just within the last week's statement. And since my house is right next door, my house gets affected. Okay. Anyway, if I'm supposed to have that 25-foot buffer, how do I get it?
Well, once you've done your testimony, if you're completed with it, we'll answer your questions.
Oh, okay.
As long as you don't have any other issues you'd like to bring up.
The other thing that, and it's just, it just is me, in my house, I have one window on the left side, and they were already using the parking lot when it got dark earlier, and all the lights would come in through that window.
You mean the car lights?
Car lights, whatever else comes through there, and I'm just hoping that if and when this gets done, they're gonna have some kind of, I don't even know what you're gonna say, something that cushions the sounds coming from there, because if they're, if they're turning on engines, turning off engines, you know, it makes a lot of noise.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
And I do know that there is the Gulf Stream down at the bottom, so it does have some water down there.
Yes.
And when it rains hard, turns into the Gulf Stream, sometimes it looks like the Gulf trickle.
Okay.
But anyway, I think that's it.
Okay, thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Hearing none, I would probably go to the city planner at this point and look for your comments.
Would you just read the memo?
Sure.
Okay. All right, May 25th, 2022, LCP Realty LLC has filed a special exception and site plan application for a change of use and site improvements to install a parking lot as a primary use at 37 Felicity Lane. The parking lot will serve as an overflow and employee marking lot for the pediatric office across the street at 20 Felicity Lane. The property is the former location of a demolished house that last served as a dental office. The parking lot, as proposed, will contain 10 paved parking spaces. The property is 0.33 acres in size and has 100 feet of frontage on Felicity Lane. The property is located in the R6 zone, which allows for a primary use as a parking lot to service an off-site building within 300 feet by special exception in accordance with the use table in Section 3.1 of the zoning regulations and the parking regulations in Section 5.13.1.1B. It is bounded by an R6 parcel to the west at the corner of Peck Road and Felicity Lane, and by R10S zoning to the north, east, and south. Plans have been submitted with the application titled Site Plan LCP Real Estate LLC, 20 and 37 Felicity Lane, Torrenton, Connecticut, by Rika Associates LLC, Litchfield, Connecticut, revised to May 23rd, 2022, three sheets. Staff has met previously with the property owner and engineer to discuss the project prior to this meeting. Interviewing the applications, plans, and documents submitted, I have the following comments. If approved, the applicant is required to submit two stamped paper copy site plans, including chairman's signature boxes required in Section 8.4.3. P of the regulations. Two, if approved, the applicant is required to submit one Mylar copy of the site plan bearing a signature box, a copy of the approval letter from the commission, a seal and Live Inc. stamp for filing with the city clerk. The applicant shall file a Mylar plan with the city clerk after signature by the chairman. Other staff comments. Wetlands and nearby water course is greater than 100 feet away from the proposed work on, I should say, on the property. Therefore, no wetlands permits are required for this application. This constitutes a favorable wetlands report for this application. Landscaping, landscaping plans are acceptable as presented in the revised plans of May 23rd, 2022. Lighting, a photometric plan sheet, SL2, has been included as part of the most recent plan revisions. Cut sheets on lighting fixtures were also submitted and are compliant cutoff fixtures. The lighting plan and fixtures are acceptable as proposed. Signage, no new signage is proposed for this project. All new signage shall be permitted in conformance with Section 5.15 of the zoning regulations. Any new proposed signs of over 32 square feet will require site plan approval. Conservation Commission, this application was not referred to the Conservation Commission for review and comment. Engineering, city engineer Paul Hudson's submitted the following email comments on the proposed plans on 5/24/22. I will make a suggestion, the one light pole behind the wall, be moved west and closer to the driveway to provide some lighting in driveway section or add another fixture facing south. This can be done during construction if desired. Everything appears to be in order, and I have no further comment. Police traffic, police traffic sergeant Dustin Baldus in an email dated 5/25/22. in an email dated five twenty-five twenty-two has offered the following comments on the plans. I don't believe there's enough pedestrian traffic, given the location of the dead-end road to warrant excess as they were initially putting in. I think in this case, less is more. No further comment. Uh just to clarify, that was on the proposed crosswalk that was there in the last set of plans. Um fire, no comments were received from the fire marshal's office for this application. WPCA, Mary Pirati, administrative assistant. WPCA, in an email to me dated five six twenty-two, has offered the following comments. We have no comments regarding this project. The sewer was permanently disconnected prior to demolition of the house. Building, building official Kevin Gillette, in a letter dated to me five five twenty-two, recommended one, please provide the following information as applicable when applying for the required permits. Complete full-size sets of IBC section one oh seven required construction documents as applicable prepared by a registered design professional for all work performed. Uh complete life safety plan with occupant load, complete plan for accessibility, including parking and passenger loading facilities. Complete exhaust hood and fire suppression system plans, complete mechanical, electrical, and plumbing plumbing plans. Two, subject to review and onsite correction. Three, it shall be the duty of the permit holder or their agent to notify the building official that such work is ready for inspection. Uh conclusion, I recommend the approval of special exception twenty-two dash zero three and site plan number fourteen zero eight for a change of use and site improvements to install a parking lot as a primary use at thirty-seven Felicity Lane with the following conditions and recommendations. The applicant shall follow the recommendations and requirements contained in this memo with respect to landscaping, lighting, and signage, including the relocation of a single light as requested by the city engineer in consultation with land use staff. Two, it is recommended that the applicant follow the advice of building official Kevin Gillette contained in his letter dated to me five five twenty-two. Three, the applicant shall submit two stamped paper copy site plans, including a chairman's signature box as required in section eight point four point three point P of the regulations. Four, the applicant is required to submit one Mylar copy of the site plan bearing a signature box, a copy of the approval letter from the commission, a seal and live ink stamp for filing with the city clerk. The applicant shall file a Mylar plan with the city clerk after signature by the chairman.
Okay, thanks. Um commissioners, any other questions you wanna present them? Yeah. Okay, in regards to um the young lady who was in opposition, can we address the buffer requirement that she says doesn't mean? Number one. Number two, I would like you to assure her regarding the water runoff on how it's being handled. I don't know that she understood that. And in addition, I think you can explain the lighting situation, so it won't be infr- infringing on her. So if you would address her comments, I'd appreciate that.
I can. I'll start with the lighting. Uh we will be able to move the fixture that Paul has asked farther to the north, which will help to illuminate the driveway. I took a look at the photometric lighting plan and there's there's enough room with the with the light so that we won't have any spillover onto the next property to the north, so that's absolutely not a problem to do that. Uh the lighting will be shut off automatically every night at ten o'clock. And the lighting that we use is called full cutoff lighting, so it doesn't, it's not like a spotlight where it broadcasts out to the side. It it broadcasts downward and it does not shine past the property lines. Uh we have a plan that was prepared by the lighting company to make sure that the light does not spill over across the property line, so you should be okay with with the lighting. Uh drainage wise, may I, I can talk, I think fairly loudly, I think it would be easier to walk over to the screen.
We are proposing a drainage structure that will capture water from the site. Water, groundwater, of course, will contain water, of course, escape. When after the stream is bad, but water will come down and drive from that source. So you create this area here. It's called infiltration. Every while, ditched under the ground with bigger individual blocks placed in so that it's rain-stirring, but it has a lot of chair space over the water wall thing. And it will be stoned for the surface, so as the water flows down, people don't, this panel will sit there. And potentially, if the pavement disappears, what doesn't will be released in this area that will cause a very large impound. So the rainwater that that leaks out there will flow out through the fabric that's on the top of the walls and coming here at a very slow rate, and it will be dissipated. This structure, this magic pack.
Okay, but if it's raining and the rain's coming down this way, it's gonna hit the embankment that's already a mess.
There's there's not much you can do about it. It's it's very steep and it's kind of a gentle machine. These type of areas is going to make it very hard to stay there. Because in order to to fix the embankment or to try to make it better, you have to disturb it. And there's no good way of protecting a slope that is that steep from the rainstorm that's coming straight down that. Uh what protects this slope is the vegetation, if nothing else. The trees that are going on it, they remain will help to protect more than anything else, because they retain the image. More so than some of the.
So Ken, I have a a thing I'd like to add to that. I think you can this potentially can actually improve the ability of that steeper part to kind of recuperate a little bit. Because if you don't have a lot of runoff, you're capturing a lot of water and forcing that water to leach into the ground as opposed to runoff down the hill. So this is a better scenario than having it runoff, which will constantly erode the the steeper part of the backyard. This might allow that backyard to recover itself over time and and actually more vegetation will grow, more trees will grow, and it'll stabilize that whole embankment. So this this is, I think, a has a high degree of potential for improving that backyard.
The water, since the original house was built, has been just going over there, so we were preventing that. Or stopping with this general impediment, trying to slow it down. Landscaping wise, there are, there's an existing row of very large evergreens right on the property line that are to remake. Those evergreens, however, have been skinned up and and debranched, so they're allowing a lot now more than anything else, but all of the vegetation is high. We're proposing to put in lower shrubs that go to fifteen to twenty feet. Paul, you've been in the buffer area. The buffer area for this zone is fifty. It's not twenty-five feet. I verified that uh Monday with Jeremy because um he he wanted to make sure that we got it right. So that that has been verified. What I did notice is that plantings that were shown here are all deciduous trees, which are microtrees. So they provide a better buffer for you. I mean, we plan, we take a look at the pipes of plantings we're using and specify some evergreen trees as well so that you have a solid year-round buffer in usually part of the lot and in the house versus a half the buffer. And people in the shrubs at least, they have plenty of buffer for those root for the fall off, so we can we can come up with a mix.
Okay. Thanks, Ken. Okay, so we've gone through the opposition and favor and we've read the staff reports. We have no more comment. Um so if you, I I assume you've already summarized, or do you have want to say anything else?
I I I think that's it. I have I addressed all the commissioners' questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the time is, hang on a second, somewhere seven thirty-nine, I declare the public hearing closed. And we'll give you a decision. I guess. So we're gonna make a note. I don't know if you want to put that on.
I don't, I didn't already pass that down, right?
I don't, I don't remember seeing it.
Okay. I might have just mixed it in here. Yeah, there it is.
I don't know if we want to add to this, what that Ken is gonna reevaluate the landscape.
The plantings.
Should we do that?
Um I can, I can make a note and we'll add it in. Well, I'll we'll make sure to add it in if if we can, if we can sign this one and and maybe just uh handwrite it in.
Right.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm gonna make a note here.
Yeah, we can just probably, if we could squeeze it in there somewhere.
Well, I'll put it here somehow. We're gonna make it five.
Yeah.
All right, so I just did it. I think that's it, but it should be okay. Hey, so if we uh have a motion, if you would read it, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve special exception twenty-two dash zero three in site plan one four zero eight. Applicant LCP Realty LLC, location thirty-seven Felicity Lane. Proposal change of use to primary parking lot former residential use with the following conditions and recommendations. One, the applicant shall follow the recommendations and requirements contained in this men memo with respect to landscaping, lighting, and signage, including the relocation of a single light as requested by the city engineer in consultation with land use staff. Two, it is recommended that the applicant follow the advice of building official Kevin Gillette contained in his letter to me dated five five twenty-two. Three, the applicant shall submit two stamped paper copy site plans, including the chairman's signature box as required in section eight point four point three point P of the regulations. For the applicant is required to submit one Mylar copy of the site plan bearing signature box, a copy of the approval letter from the commission, a seal and live ink stamp for filing with the city clerk. The applicant shall file a Mylar plan with the city clerk after signature by the chairman. Five, applicant will review shrub border plantings for more evergreen mix.
Okay, I have a motion second.
Second.
Second by Diane. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. There you go.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is uh item five, which is old business. A site plan fourteen oh seven, applicant Michael Leonard. Okay.
We got a request for an extension, a thirty-day extension on that today.
Okay.
They almost have their plans ready, but they're not quite.
Yeah, I don't think we have to vote on that. We can just.
We we have to vote to actually accept the extension and then just table and then table the application.
Okay, so we have an applicant, a request for an extension, a thirty-day extension for um Michael Leonard, and the location is twenty-eight sixty-five Winston Road. And the proposal was retail sales and storage usage first floor only. So what I'm gonna say is I'm making a motion that we accept the thirty-day extension. Anybody want to second that?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we have an extension. Okay, number six, new business. All right, new business A, site plan fourteen-ten, Borgesi Building and Engineering. Three sixty Technology Park Drive, and this proposal is to construct a fifteen thousand four hundred fifty-six square foot greenhouse. Probably we can probably put these together.
Not that you have the properties.
You can't. Oh, okay. All right, so if the applicants here, please come up and provide us with what is you want to do.
Okay.
That's okay, I'll share with Donna.
Jeremy, you're calling it up. I have a board, but I don't have a little whistle for it.
And we did the first sheet, so I'll have to zoom in. Let's go there.
Hey. All set?
Yes.
All right. Uh for the record, Mark Borgesi, president Borgesi Building and Engineering, uh representing new opportunities uh and food for thought sort of for. Um we're going to be, what we're proposing is, is there's already an existing greenhouse, basically the same size on the site. Uh what they, we are proposing is an additional greenhouse um for fifteen thousand square feet. And it's going to have a uh walkway, basically alleyway that runs into the existing steel building that's there um for them to move product in and out um easily and covered in in climate-controlled weather. Um so it's pretty standard in the sense that it's basically, we're doing the same thing we've already done. Um it's gonna include footings and foundations. Um there is a little drainage that needs to be uh extended up on the top. You can see it. There's a a ripwire, a riprap pipe that goes at the top for that hill, the drainage. Um we are going to tie in the end wall, um should be both end walls. Both end walls are downspouts into the pipe. You can see it. That ties into the existing drainage down at the bottom of the hill um that was put in for the previous construction. Um and there is one yard drain that's just off to the right of the um alleyway, doesn't know hallway, whatever we're calling it. Um that is also gonna be tied in uh to the downspouts that are on the far end of the building.
Okay, any uh questions, commissioners?
So it's essentially the same type of setup that we had approved before.
Correct. Yes, it's pretty much the same building.
So he's expanding what he's doing.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I have no other questions myself, so. Let's, I'll go to you, Jeremy.
Yes, so so I did, I did do a a draft memo for for people to review, but we for this application, we're still, we have most of our comments in.
Okay.
We're still waiting on comments from the city engineer.
Okay.
And some final comments from WPCA.
Okay.
So they both, they both said they'll have them in by Friday, but
Okay.
Doesn't help us for tonight.
No problem. We'll just hold it open until we get all that.
Okay.
That all that good stuff thing, okay.
But uh nothing earth-shattering that to to be concerned with in the in the memo, but we'll, when it's completed, I'll send it to you. Okay.
Yeah. I mean, we can move on to uh the next agenda item, which is site plan fourteen eleven.
So you're up on me.
Okay, well, we're gonna move along here.
Trying, trying.
Okay, so again, the applicant, uh Borgesi Building and Engineering, thirty-seven Technology Park Drive, it's a different location within the park, and it's the proposal is to construct a ninety-three hundred sixty square foot edition associated parking and loading dot revisions. And the other one on the fourteen-ten site plan. If he gets everything in order, are we gonna have to bring that back to the board for, you know, for approval, right?
For which one?
Um fourteen-ten. Will you be able to approve it?
Oh, this one. Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, it'll have, it'll have to come back. Yeah. Just.
That's Whitman, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so uh I'm not sure what happened. I got a touch from Roblin check, who was supposed to present. He is not here, so.
Okay.
I could do the best I can to answer it. I know enough just to get me by, but bear with me if I can help you guys in anything else. Yeah, yeah. The good news is that all the problems fall on me, so I know enough about it to 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 help you guys out, so. Um but basically what it is, is the same thing as this, except it's completely different, but we're adding another addition onto Whitman Robotics. Um this will be, I think it's number three. This will be, I think it's number three, that extends off of the back of the building. Jeremy, you mind calling it up just so I could, a reference for that? We're extending it off the bu- back of the building. It's basically to expand their manufacturing area. They're growing. They need more space for robotics and their equipment. We've, we've presented this to them for a couple of years now. They've finally been able to pull the trigger after COVID. And it's pretty much maximizing the space of their land. They're, they're all done. They're all done, so. This is the last hurrah for them. There's a little bit of extension of the pavement whenever we get it over there.
Oh, you want me to move it over here? Correct? Is that, is that, that captures everything, right?
Yeah, yeah, that captures everything. So you can see basically where the end of the park.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just trying, I'm trying to share my screen. Hang on one second.
I mean, I'm trying to get my way through.
Need a little help.
So you can see basically right now, the building ends with the existing addition. That's basically where the pavement ends now. There's a, a loading deck or drive-in overhead door that's there now. We're going to be extending the building. There'll be an additional drive-in overhead door. And then a parking spot, which I can't really see, but I believe it's ten parking spaces that are over there with a turnaround for the trucks to go in.
The big thing was they always had an issue with the trucks getting into this, this loading dock.
Yeah.
So now we're expanding the parking lot over here so that they can pull in and back up accordingly. And then also this expands their parking because they needed more employees.
And you eliminate the other parking island that was there.
Correct.
And that's just gonna be a ground level garage door going into the new addition.
Yes.
Oh, it looks pretty straightforward to me.
Yeah, I mean, it's, like I said, this is their third addition. It's kind of the last one, so. Very similar to everything we've done in the past. Same thing with drainage, et cetera.
Well, commissioners, have any questions? How about?
Actually, I do. When was the, the last edition done? How many years ago?
Jesus, I'm gonna say ten years ago. It might be more than that, because it's one of my first projects I've ever done. So it might be fifteen years ago. Been a long time.
So they're always obviously looking to expand.
Correct.
So another ten years, they could be looking for more space.
They're gonna go elsewhere.
Right.
Yep, yep. They bought, they own the building right next to it, which used to be, geez, I forget the building, but they bought the building right next to it that they facilitate now. There is room for growth on that building. They wanna stay here for this certain production. The other building does a variation of what they do. There is group, little room for growth in that building, but you are correcting that statement about ten years, they're pretty much, they're at the one, so.
Okay, so Jeremy, you wanna go through your notes?
So, so this, this, this one, we're in the same exact, yeah, yeah, that we're just waiting on WPCA and engineering, so.
Alright.
I, I didn't even do it. I didn't even do a draft memo for this one, but I'll get them both out when, when they're complete.
For both, are we gonna come back again?
Yes. It'll be the June eighth, June eighth meeting.
Okay, we have a pretty quick meeting.
Yeah.
Just go through staff notes and maybe have a couple of questions.
I, I, I'm not like not a hundred percent, but I'm not really seeing any issues with either one of these applications coming.
We'll see comments beforehand anyways.
Yeah, it'll be by, by Friday. I'll be able to forward something to you.
Right, or, or Paul.
Either way. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, so now we're going on to item seven, which is correspondence, and we have something here. We don't necessarily have to belabor what Jeremy's provided here, but we can, if you want to discuss it, or we can just take it as advice for a potential conversation later on, but let's have Jeremy fill us in a little bit about what he's got here on the cannabis establishment's regulation.
Yeah, so we, out of our, you know, out of our joint meetings, we, we decided that we were gonna take the wheel on this. So I, I had some conversations with, with the mayor and with, with RISTA Economic Development Director on a, on a direction we would maybe want to go with this, and, and we all kind of put our heads together and decided that the, the best way to do this would be just to piggyback on our existing medical marijuana overlay zone. There's, there's two different, there's, there's kind of two different ways that, that I think we ought to just kind of decide which, which way we want to go. It's to have sort of this rigid setback of five hundred feet from, from all, you can kind of see in the back page here, all these public parks, playgrounds, schools, recreational facilities, childcare centers, libraries.
You were talking about, I think, the state at fifteen hundred or something.
Yeah, that was for signage. So I, so I did get clarification on that. That's only, that's only for signage not related to just like the ordinary business sign. So you know how like the head shops will have, will have products and advertising in the windows and stuff? You're not allowed to do that, that within fifteen hundred feet, or to have any billboards, particularly out-of-state billboards. So, so whether we want to have this rigid five hundred foot setback from all these uses, or with the way I've shown it, we, we sort of do it like we do with a zone change in that somebody produces a map and shows where all those things are within five hundred feet, and we can make a, a decision based on our, you know, based on our, our criteria that we can sort of use for all special permit, special exception applications and some of the other, you know, you know, standards we use in this section, in the sec.
So what you're suggesting is rather have a hard number.
We, we make people show what's, what's around.
Right, and then we make a decision what, what we see, whether or not it's acceptable.
Right, so we'd be, we'd be taking, right, we'd be taking these in as, as zone changes and as special, as, as site plan, special exceptions, like all, kind of all at once.
Yeah.
So to establish the, the overlay.
I like that idea. I think that it provides, I mean, every time we put, it seems like every time you throw a rigid number down, you find something that shows up front and it goes like, damn it, doesn't work.
The thing was the thought is, is there might be, might be neighborhoods where, you know, there's a, there's a, there's a public park, but there's like four hundred feet of woods in between, you know, you know what I mean? Or it, it, which is a lot different than, than a, a public park on Main Street, right down the street on Main Street.
Right.
So, I think this, I think it's good to have a little bit of this flexibility. And we're not, you know, because it's an overlay zone, we're not really putting ourselves out on a limb to be, to be sued over, over denial.
Right.
You know, because we're, 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 the, the zone changes are different than just denying an application. Because we have to allow the overlay zone first, so. Gives us some guidance on the overlay.
Now, in the timing of this, I know that, you know, we had a moratorium took us to like in September, October, I don't know, so maybe it was November.
September and middle of September, yeah.
I know in our meetings, we were saying, let's move this thing along as opposed to, let's, we don't need to drag this out till the end of the moratorium. So that's why we decided to pull the trigger and start to do this and actually create some you know, regulations, guidelines, so that we can present in a public hearing. And I, what is your plan on the public hearing in July?
Yeah, I was, I was thinking of the July meeting, which is July twenty, and if we get no pushback, we could make, we could make a decision at that meeting. Worst case, it gets, it gets pushed into August and we're still way ahead of our.
Yeah, because we can extend it. We, we have the ability to extend the public hearing if there's comment. We need more time to think about it.
So do we know the towns that already have everything in place in Connecticut and are moving, are able to move forward with the retail?
Yeah, there are plenty of towns that actually.
Winston.
Well, not only that, but I think.
But I mean, have they actually gotten applications for retail?
I don't know if they've gotten applications, but they just finished their regs last month.
Don't the applications come through the state or something?
The state's gotta approve them too.
Right.
Yeah.
First and foremost, the state has to approve them.
So they, they have this whole pre-application process, so they can go through a whole bunch of steps, but they won't get their final approval until they have local zoning approval.
I mean, you have to have a person involved with the business that is from a, I forgot what they call it.
Well, half, fifty percent of them are, are, yeah, now I can't think of it either.
Diversity.
Yeah.
It's kind of diversity or from, from a zone, a period, you know, I I mean, I guess you would call it a economic zone, maybe that was.
Yeah, it's, it's in, it's in.
I forgot the word.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's the state's business. That's how they stick their nose in it to make sure that these people who might have been yeah, or they might have been.
It's disproportionately affected by the.
Yeah, by, by the cannabis of the past.
Yeah.
So they're giving those people an opportunity to take place.
Is there any incentive for women-owned?
Not in the state stat, not in the state statute, but yeah, yeah.
Like, like they do in the construction world when they get a.
Yeah, no, I, I didn't see that when I read it. I didn't see anything.
Yeah.
And we can have one in Torreyton?
No, they, they, they actually, with the, the brand-new, brand-new public act actually withdrew that. It struck that section.
It struck the section. How many can you have? Oh, you guys measure one.
That's right.
Originally it was one for between twenty-five thousand.
Yes, we, we can only have one, we can only have one of each, one producer, one
Retail.
One retail, because we need it to be over fifty thousand to get a second.
To get two, but now you're saying they opened the wide up.
Yeah, it's still, so the state still is controlling the number of licenses they give, but it's not, I think, I think the, you know, I can't get in the minds of the legislators, but I think the problem was they were hemming themselves in by not being able to concentrate on the areas they wanted to, because they were only, they were limiting.
Having enough impact.
In, in, in the towns. Yeah.
Although the bigger towns would have more opportunity. You're right.
Right.
Well, that opens it up to all the small towns to do whatever they want. So there's more competition under that kind of scenario, because now there's no limitations.
Right.
I mean, as long, if you're willing to approve more than one retail store, then you have retail competition. So you can buy it cheaper.
Which isn't a bad thing.
Yeah.
Good. Be three forty an ounce. So I wasn't able to attend the last city council meeting, and I know I had asked Eleanor and I had CC'd you on there to find out if we have any data from like Great Barrington, any type of crime.
Yeah, the, so.
Well, yeah, the, the.
Please, please keep us here.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Yeah, and he said there's, basically his comment was, there's no, there's no impact.
Yeah, there's no impact at all.
I'm not surprised, but they do have a security guard there.
Yeah, and so.
Police officer.
And I think it, it might be, there might be something in the statutes at, at Massachusetts, because I know that, God, they also have a security person at the door. So that might be something that they put into their regulations where you have that security person. I don't know, I didn't read them. But it seemed bad that both of them have.
Hmm. Same state.
Right, same state. But, I mean, for our purposes, the reason we wanted to move forward with this was it's a foregone conclusion. The legality issue is not the issue. We're not gonna discuss legality. It's not, oh.
Yeah.
Now it's a question, do you want to participate and gain the three percent? And what do you do with that? Well, I like the way the state has forced us to use it because where we're using it is on youth services, all of the mental health, all of the things that potentially could prevent it.
And those didn't change, that didn't change in the statute.
And that didn't change. So, you know, as long as it isn't freewheeling, like it goes into general fund, we move back. This is now targeted money.
Right.
And my view of it was, if you can't prevent the legality of it, and you can't prevent your citizens within your town from using and buying then why not take that money and beef up all of your youth services and your mental health services and social services to try and have an effect on that potential use, which I steer people away from. Like alcohol, you know, you try and steer people, you're not gonna get everybody, but it might impact some of the people.
Well, I mean, even if they're not leaning towards, you know, consuming cannabis products, I mean, just to have those services for those individuals to make it, you know, a stronger community, yeah.
Yeah, it's always difficult to fund youth services, you know, you're always struggling to find money for them, and, you know, you got organizations like PAL who are out there trying to have an impact.
And Eleanor did say that, that there was one specific group, though, that they have budgeted. It's like thirty thousand, it's in the budget, and they could actually eliminate that from the budget because this would, you know, produce those funds. And then, you know, utilize those funds somewhere else too.
Yeah, so, so a few of the categories, though, are, are, they're broad. I mean, we can, we can use it for a lot.
Oh, yeah, you can probably stretch it a little bit.
Yeah. So I did make sure to add this one statement, the commission may deny applications based on proximity to the uses above if found to be in conflict with section four point one six and eight point two. Those are, those are the standards for, you know, just review of any special exception or, or under this section.
It's basically the same rule as far as alcohol with no open container.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
On public, you know, public parks.
Well, we, yeah, we also, we haven't, we're, did they pass it yet? The, the public smoking ordinance?
No, they have an ordinance, and that's the thing that has to happen also, where we'll have P and Z regulations.
People hanging around these establishments.
The, the, the council's gonna have to create ordinances regarding its use and where you can be, where you can smoke, where you can't smoke. And of course, that's an enforcement issue. It's an enforcement issue.
Right.
At that point, but.
No, this is not just limited to the plant base. It's, you can.
No, it's anything from that, that they would sell in the store.
Edible.
What do we get for an edible?
I have no idea.
You know, when somebody said it was three hundred and forty dollars an ounce, I'm like, who the heck can afford that? You know, it's a good thing.
High-end business.
The one thing that, that I, you know, think, I think is gonna be, you know, will be totally impossible to regulate or to, to somehow manage, and that is the private growing. They allow private growth.
Six.
You know, if that person's privately growing, they're probably passing along.
Same thing that people are doing in Sunshine and White.
I make my own lines.
So, so along, along with this, I was actually, we, we did have some maps that showed like, it, it took these, these uses. I didn't grab them for today, but it took these uses and made five hundred foot circles. So it, I think it's an informative map. It kind of shows in the local business districts and the industrial zones where, where we would, where we would be away from all these uses. And it basically concentrates us in the middle of East Main Street, the very top on the New Hartford side of East Main Street. The northern part of Winston Road and South Main Street, pretty much.
And South Main would qualify as one of those zones.
Yeah. I can't, I, I.
I have a mental blank.
I say, I say it twenty times each day and I can't remember it now.
Alright, well then we'll move along with that as we meet again, and then we'll have something that's more more substantial that we can have and set that public hearing date, and then we'll get to see what kind of response we get from the public. Well, it'll be, you know, the question will be, you, you know, how many people have an interest and will attend it? And it's difficult because, you know, does it represent the town? You know, public hearings don't necessarily represent.
Well, you know, you, you were here when Len, the cloud showed the letter that he received from that individual. You're gonna get people like that too, that just, you know. John's bought a hell in hand. The medicinal applications, people thought that there was going to be so much climate, I mean, you don't even know they're there.
Right.
Yeah, no, they're, you know, it's a different animal.
Right. And our, you know, I mean, I think we're kind of lucky that our our medicinal you know, entrepreneurs are, are know what they're doing. They know their stuff. The ones that we had, the one that we have, so.
It's not, not the sixty-sixth.
Yeah. Yep.
It was such an innocent time, though.
Alright, alright, moving on, I'll go to number eight, which is adjournments. I have a motion to adjourn.
I like that motion.
Okay, second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
We adjourned.
Alright, thank you.